We will call to order the pre-meeting for the West Jordan Planning Commission for December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. We have Commissioner Thomas online and Commissioner Richardson is excused. Otherwise, we are all here. And we will enjoy hopefully a brief break and respite after the last two meetings. Just going over pre-meeting. So a review of the agenda, any comments, questions on the minutes? Text amendment, message of appreciation. Larry, did you want to talk to us about the text amendment at all? It seemed pretty straightforward.
Um, it's straightforward. Corey Farlick will be here. He's the Public Services Director. So it's, it really is, um, improving lighting at intersections and crosswalks and, um, I think there has been some accidents in the past and they just want to try to prevent that, make it as light as possible. Most of the owner, I should say, the majority of it will be installed by new development, you know, but the city will, put lights in where they feel is necessary for the safety of their pedestrians. And not only pedestrians, but at intersections because sometimes they can be rather dark and so. That's all I got to say on that. So.
Great. Uh, in case, training today? All right.
And I need to be able to turn my PowerPoint on. There we go. And so the, what is on the list this month's training, the subdivision and improvement guarantees for subdivisions and, and so if you think about a subdivision ordinance, which the city adopts, it's really, it all begins with the general plan. That the planning commission just went through this year and recommending approval by, to the city council. But the general plan, as you're aware of, is an advisory document. Okay, this is what the planning commission and city council feels that the city should be. And it's how it should develop. But it's only advisory. It doesn't have any statutory teeth or we can't enforce it by requiring people to do anything with the general plan. The way you do that, the general plan is enforced through the zoning ordinance, one. We're not talking about the zoning ordinance tonight and the subdivision ordinance or regulation. And so what's the difference between the zoning and subdivision regulations? Well, zoning deals with use. Uses, you know, you don't have any uses in the subdivision regulation, but you know, property uses in the M one zone, the R one zone. Any of the twenty-five zones West Jordan has, all of the uses are specifically in a zone that it regulates. The lot area, that's in the zone, that's not in the subdivision regulations. Setbacks, you know, how far it is from, how far the building is from property lines. Lot frontage, how wide the lot is, you know, that's not in the subdivision regulations. The height of buildings, landscaping and fencing, that's all of, all of those things are zoning regulations. And as you can see, they deal uh, mostly with what happens on the lot. Okay, as it's created to the zoning regulation. Now subdivision, subdivision regulations are a little bit different. Um, and they deal with a different part of the implementation of the general plan. So it talks about the different types of subdivision and I'll go through all of these. Um, if you're wondering plot requirements, ability to service, I mean, service with utilities, lot design, block length, road layout, utilities and all other design requirements. So where does the city get the authority to regulate? Land use by subdivision. Well, of course, it's, cities are always creature of the state, you know? And so the state has to give, uh, the enabling legisla-, they have established enabling legisla-, legislation, excuse me, to allow cities to create an ordinance. And so as you can see here, it says the legislative body or the city council may enact ordinance. And that's after a recommendation by the planning commission. Um, so they can rec-, they can adopt subdivision regulation. And so what it does is it follows kind of the sequential pro- process. You adopt the ordinance with all the, the requirements for the subdivision. That's all adopted. The developer follows that. It's approved by the city according to the ordinance. Then the subdivision plot may be filed with the county recorder. And then lots may be sold. It doesn't work the other way around. You can't sell a lot and then create a plot. It's got to follow that sequentially. And then it says in number two, if you, if the city doesn't bother to enact a subdivision ordinance, then they can only follow what's in state law. And there are some towns that have not adopted subdivision regulations, but usually what they do is they follow county regulations at that time. Because there just is not a lot of regulations in state law governing subdivision of property. So West Jordan has adopted a subdivision code. They've had one since the city, since the forties when the, the city or the town was adopted. Uh, you know, it's gone through a lot of variations and when I was in city hall, I had a little tiny book like that and hopefully it survived the Conex box over there. But it was probably like eight and a half by five, a little tiny book about that thick that had all of the subdivision regulations and zoning regulations at that time was maybe eight pages, you know, now it's hundreds of pages. I don't know if it's hundreds of pages. It's a lot of pages. Let's put it that way. And so, and so what is the purpose of the subdivision regulation? So as you can see, number one is for both the health, safety and general welfare of the city and future inhabitants. To encourage and facilitate orderly growth. You know, and I, I think one of the problems the city ran into a few years ago is all of the development probably ended about where Bangor Highway is. And then all of a sudden they proved this big development way out on the west side. They call the leapfrog development. Well, they had to run all kinds of utility lines and, and things like that. And what that has led to is a problem that we've found that we now have to upsize all those because we, they took their best guess on how the, the west side would develop. So subdivision regulations should encourage orderly growth. Now, that's not wholly the responsibility of the subdivision regulation, but uh, is one of the primary purposes. So provide adequate open space for light and air, prevent overcrowding of land and less than congestion on the streets. You know, secure economy and municipal expenditures. And so what does that mean? Encourage adequate provisions of, for transportation. So just like I said, if you have a big leapfrog development, that's not very economical. Cause you're running miles and miles of pipe. You know, and farmland. So, you know, you should look at economy and it should provide for water, search, school, parks and other facilities and services. All of those things we've come to expect in a modern civilized society. You know, that's what the subdivision ordinance regulates. And ensure safety from fire and other dangers, you know, and it's, there's been, you know, one of the case studies in planning school was always the great fire of Chicago. And how that happened, because everything was built out of very flammable materials, but very close together. There was no way to control fire. And so when Mrs. Old Larry's cow kicked the lantern over, burned down half of the city. Because there was no way to prevent the fire and it just lapped from building to building. And the, you know, and so that's one of the purposes of a subdivision regulation. So what are the sub-, what type of subdivisions do we have? We have a minor and a major and a lot line adjustment. So quickly, a major subdivision in West Jordan City is anything of ten lots or more that requires a dedication of property uh, or streets or property to the city of West Jordan. That cannot be done by staff. It has to come before this body is a planning commission. Under the law, the planning commissioner, planning commission is who accepts the dedications on behalf of the developer for the city. Now, minor subdivision is less than ten lots, ten residential lots, ten industrial lots, ten commercial lots. It doesn't matter. But there is no dedication. Now, you very, occasionally we see some that are ten without dedication. It's not very often. But that's the difference between the two, if remember. And of course, in a lot line adjustment is just moving a lot line uh, on adjoining lots or adjoining subdivision lots. Uh, to maybe somebody wants to expand their lot bigger. Now you can't make a, a lot smaller than the zoning allows through a lot line adjustment. But those are the three types of subdivision we have. So what are the plot requirements of a subdivision? So, and that's how the plot is arranged. And all of you have seen plots, many of you, you're all seasoned planning commissioners. You've seen a lot of plots come before you. Uh, so you have regulations on how the plots arrange, you know, the name of the subdivision. And that's pretty simple. That's in state law, county requirements. You can't develop a subdivision plot if it doesn't have a name on it. Because that's how we identify a subdivision is by its name. So the survey requirement, signature blocks. There are numerous people, you know, the, you know, I am and Jay, Trish, Matt, any of you who've been, you know, the person signing for the planning commission, there's probably eight or ten different people that sign that plot. So he gets looked at by a lot of people before it's done because property rights are very sacred in the United States, but we want to make sure everybody's protected. So lot descriptions, road layouts, dedication I just spoke of, then of course notes. What are the notes about? The notes might say what this easement's for, with this easement's vacated. What this, if there's a fence here. You know, anything that is on the plot that needs further, further description is in part of the notes. So the next thing is the ability to service utilities and all design requirements. And so, you know, our, our subdivision requirements, uh, and this is more in, not in the plot, but in there's always accompanying documents that come with a plot that are called the design documents. You know, we, we have this construction documents, we call them for the subdivision because it's enough to hand a plot out for twenty lots, but how are you going to construct these roads? How are you going to build the water? How's it going to be laid out? All that stuff can't be contained on just the plot sheet that shows what the lot is. How big it is, what the frontages are, what the lot number is, because it would get really, really messy. So it's on accompanying pages. The only thing that's really recorded is like the plot that you see the plot page because that's the legal document. But all of these construction documents are in a full force and effect for that subdivision. And so that's water layout, sewer layout, storm sewer roads, other utilities. And construction drawings is required. And the city of West Jordan has many, many pages. And these are just a few examples of, uh, the construction details that have been adopted by the city. And it is the last few years, the planning commission has uh, recommended approval of all of these to the city council. You can say on the one side, you have a, that's just happens to be a local road, uh, detail. They all have to follow that. There's nothing different. They can't design their own road. They have to follow this detail. Uh, you can see the residential sewer installation. They have to follow this detail. Street lighting, which we'll be talking a little bit about tonight, but not really about this, but they have to follow this detail. And then storm sewer. So we have all of these details and standards that the planning committee, that staff has had created and vetted. The planning commission has recommended approval and they've been approved by the city council. So they're in full force and effect under the laws of West Jordan. They have to be followed. A developer does not have the opportunity to say, well, I'm going to draw up this uh, fifteen foot road because I think it works better. And we're going to dedicate it to you, West Jordan City. No, if you want to dedicate a road to us, it has to meet this standard. Okay, because over the years and time and snow plowing and garbage pickup and maintaining these roads, the, the city has found what works best for the city. You know, and I think Adam and you're in the business where you have very standard regulations because your group has found that works best, you know, and, and you're not really too into experimenting at this point. You want what works best. So a lot of design is another thing in subdivision regulations. And there's just a couple of things, um, about lot, you know, and see it says lots, half frontage on a public street. You know, why is that important? Why does the commission think it's important to have a lot on a public street? Is it important? If you go back many years in Vernal, out in Vernal, out in Duchesne County, there was people subdividing lots all the place, all the time out there. No access to, no, they were selling lots. Some guy bought the middle of a lot, bought a lot in the middle of fifteen hundred acres. How does he get there? You're not crossing my property. You're not crossing my property. So you see why we put them on public or private streets because you have to guarantee, the city, quite frankly, cannot approve the landlocked piece of property. It's a violation of state law. So, it has to have access on a public street and lots have frontage on two streets shall be prohibited unless, and this is kind of the, the problem with suburban development, unless it's on a collector's street. You know, there's a lot of two double fronting lots, we call them in West Jordan. They have on a residential street and then back is a collector's street, say thirteen hundred west and Bristol Ridgeway. That, you know, the side lot lines shall be right angles. Cause believe it or not, we do have some lot lines in West Jordan that are pie shaped. You know, so the front of the lots a hundred feet and you get to the very back of the lot and it's six inches. So you want to try to make them rectangle so the property is usable. And then on the E, it says all land shall be included in lots. Why is that important? You know, if it's not in a lot or it's not in an open space or it's not in an easement. Because you don't want some, well, this is just an awful piece of property. So I'm just going to leave that outside of the subdivision and I'm not going to do anything with it. Well, what's the problem that creates is who's going to maintain that? Who's going to maintain that weed and garbage patch and dumping ground? You know, and then it talks about how lots are, um, surveyed. Now this is kind of a, you know, a, a question and answer I've got here for the planning commission. So why is street layout, block length? Why do you think block length? You know, in West Jordan, a block can't be more than, uh, a thousand feet. Why is that important? What's wrong with a block? And we all know what a block is. Does it matter?
Emergency access was.
Emergency access is one, you know, connectivity. You know, what if somebody has to walk from school? Well, you have to walk all the way around this block. So, you know, if you make a block, it's okay, okay to make it a mile. Well, this little kid down here is walking a mile or this kid's walking fifteen feet, you know? So that's important. And multiple access points. Why is that important? You can only have thirty houses on one access point. All goes back to Paul who's not here tonight, but, and I think it's a good, a good rule. It's because it's for fire protection. You know, you have more and, you know, there are still some, uh, very, very deep uh, cul-de-sacs in parts of this valley. There, we saw one in a neighboring city that probably two and a half miles along the cul-de-sac. So the fire truck has drove all the way back there and out. So and there's probably forty-five, fifty homes on it. You know, what if that, that this was the big problem with, um, Summit Park for a long time. It had one, one way in and one way out. What if there's a fire on the way in, you know, forest fire? How does all those people get out? You know, it's for emergency access, uh, to minimize cut through traffic in residential areas. You know, traffic calming measures. Planning commission just approved a subdivision plot a few, a couple of weeks ago that had traffic calming measures, had the chicanes. We tried speed humps for a while and found that they're problematic. And so now they're trying the chicanes. They're trying to slow people down on these long seven, eight hundred feet drag strips, you know, they're not drag strips, but that's the reason I've always been a fan of on-street parking is it does slow people down. Safe and convenient access between neighborhoods. You know, most Jordan and the older part of the city, a lot of our neighborhoods aren't connected at all. You know, some child wants to go to one neighborhood to see their friend and in reality, their friend's house could be a hundred feet away, but they have to go all the way up to a road and back where it turns out to a mile. You know, and there's no access between neighborhoods. They're cut off. Compliance with the transportation master plan. Why do you think that's important? Mayor, why is it important to comply with a transportation master plan? You just had to deal with this a few weeks ago with some angry people. You know, that didn't want a certain road to connect to you on eleven. That's been on the transportation master plan for decades, you know?
So good, that, that's good. So I was meeting with the neighbors and they're saying, well, we don't need that those roads. There's not that many in this area. And I said, well, it's not just you. It's everybody else that's going past here. And they just couldn't give the scope of it. Finally, I said, you know, this bridge we're putting in over at eighty-six hundred south? Yeah, we love that bridge. That's going to help us get over here. I said, the people that live there don't like it.
Yeah.
So it looks like that.
But they've been on the ma-, transportation master plan. And that's the purpose of planning is you look out, try to look out in the future. Is it perfect? No, because we don't have a crystal ball. We're speculating on what's going to happen, but they're usually educated guesses. Is that what I like to call them? Um, so we, uh, regulate cul-de-sacs, you know, how wide they are. You know, I talked about a very deep cul-de-sac. You can only have a cul-de-sac of four hundred and fifty feet in West Jordan. Or it has to have special approval. You don't want a lot of those half streets. And a half street is, is a street that doesn't meet the full requirement of the standard. But in some developments, they bailed only half of that street. Now that requires special approval by the city council because you want to avoid that as much as possible. Temporary turnaround, street names, street names are important, but it's really a function of Salt Lake County. And why is that important? Is street naming important? Cause you don't want to, the, yeah.
So you can find your addresses.
Yeah, so Jay's a fireman right there, you know, it all comes back to safety. You know, Jay, what, what happens if you have the same street in Riverton as you do in West Jordan? You know, and you're responding, it can be a problem. Well, where is this? And so the county regulates that very carefully. And you can't have duplicate streets now. Has it occurred in the past? Yes. But it, it doesn't happen very often anymore. So utilities, both public and private sidewalks and trails and soils. So all of these regulations create a plot and construction documents that hopefully will result, result in a residential, industrial, commercial development. So how do we know that they're going to build all of this, you know? Most of them do because it's a very, first of all, it's a very expensive process to undertake. It's tedious. It takes a long time. A lot of engineering. A lot of professional work goes into this, you know, a even a moderate sized subdivision can, you can be in engineering fees, hundreds of thousands of dollars of design work because it does take a lot of civil engineering work and legal work. But say they get all these approval, they record it. And there's just one part of it they're not putting in. Well, the city bonds for that. And so we either take a cash bond. So what, how it'll happen is the developer will submit what they're improving, then our engineers will go look and assign a value to that, you know, so much say fifteen thousand dollars worth of improvements or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of improvements. And so what we require is a hundred percent of the value of improvements be bonded for. And what a bond means is if you put it in, you get it back. So we don't, we don't take the money, we just hold it. And that's just the city's guarantee that if they don't put it in, we can do, pull that bond and do that improvement. Did you want to say something, Duncan? Yep.
I could probably chime in there. So, um, the different types of bonds that Larry's talking about, one is a cash bond with the city. So if it's three hundred and fifty thousand worth of improvements, we literally just hold that cash, um, until it's time to give it back after our inspectors have checked everything out, inspected it, and it's time to give it back. Um, another way to do it is they enter into an agreement with a bank and the, the money is held at the bank until the city releases it. Or there's a letter of credit, which is basically a financial institution recognizing and covering that amount of money. Um, but not necessarily that there's actual cash in an account. Those are the three ways we uh, provide for that. Now, there is another option some cities allow for, which is a security bond through an insurance company. We don't currently allow for that. It doesn't really protect the city. Kind of works out well for a developer, but not so much for a city. Um, and unlike if it's cash somewhere where we can just prove that uh, in the rare, rare instance where the city needs to take that money, hire a substitute developer to finish the improvements, it's really easy to get that money if we're holding it. Especially if the bond agreement says we can, we can take it at some point after we jump through certain hoops. Unlike how easy it is if the cash is with us or with a bank. Not so easy when you're making a claim against an insurance company because an insurance company can just deny the claim and then we're, then we're out, you know, either the money or the improvements. So, um, so those are the types of bonds. And then, then we have option A and B that Larry was talking about. Option A is the construct first where they put the improvements in first before they record the plat. They just have to do a warranty for ten percent. Or there's option B where they enter into an improvement assurance agreement where they put up the hundred percent. They can record first, construct the improvements later. So, and there is the ability to start with option A. And in certain instances, they can shift to option B. So anyway, that's just, was chiming in on that additional information.
And finally, bonds are very, very heavily regulated by the state of Utah. So cities, they adopt their own bonding procedures, but they more or less mirror what's in state law. Um, we used to build the, now these are all for public improvements, curb gutter sidewalk, water sewer roads. We used to build a bond for private improvements, swimming pools, trails, fences, landscaping. The only thing that we can bond for is if the developer under a development agreement with private improvements agrees to it. Or if it's part of a trio, trail or a regional system, we can bond for that. Or it becomes a kind of a pseudo-public improvement. So that is all I have. Do you have any questions for me on everything you've ever wanted to know about subdivision in?
This is very informative and I appreciate it. I do have a question. Uh, in the last couple of meetings, we've heard a lot of public comment about schools. I know that we don't have any, I don't think we have any jurisdiction over that, but, but there's got to be some sort of interplay between the city and school district. And can somebody just kind of give us an overview of how that works?
Yeah, it's, you're correct. Under statute, um, the legislature has made it so that a city cannot deny a development based upon the availability of schools. Okay, but what we do is we do have dialogue with the school district about what new developments are coming in. And the number of units, where they are. And so it's always on their, their, they have their own master plan, school master plan. And so, uh, we meet with them quite often so they know what development is coming into the city. So there, it really is. Well, we do have communication with them. So they're very aware of what's happening, what, excuse me, what are growth? Uh, where it's going to be, what it is going to be in the future. So they're very aware of what's happening with our land use.
And when it comes to actually constructing new schools, there again, we have very little uh, in a way of jurisdiction. For example, our, our, you know, normally the fire marshal will go out and do inspections to make sure fire codes being met. That's all handled by the state fire marshal's office. Um, it, it really, we have, just make sure that basic health, safety and welfare is, 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 is being met. So we will review site plans, but basically just to make, make sure it meshes with our utility systems and things like, things like that. So, um, we do have a good working relationship though with this Jordan School District.
Uh, and does that also apply for healthcare, health facilities like hospitals? So who determines? So who determines when and where a hospital? Is that just on a private?
Private, yes, driven by market studies and, and uh, yeah, but we treat them just like any other commercial enterprise.
Just give us a minute before six or is it time?
It's exactly six.
Thank you, Larry. All right, we will call to order the uh December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting for the city of West Jordan. Uh, Commissioner Thomas is online. Commissioner Richardson is excused. All other commissioners are present. Commissioner Quinney will be rejoining us in just a moment. Um, but we will jump right in, so consent calendar, first item on the agenda is to approve minutes from December fifth, twenty twenty-three. Commissioner Winn?
I move to approve the minutes from our previous meeting, December fifth.
Commissioner Shelton?
My second to motion.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Winn, second by Commissioner Shelton. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Unanimous is a bad night. I can already tell. All right, second item on the agenda. It's a public hearing with planning commission recommendation and final action by the city council. Text amendment for streetlights amendment, amend the two thousand nine West Jordan City Municipal Code, section eight six two for streetlight installation required. Citywide applicability, state of West Jordan applicant. Corey, if you'd like to come up and present this on behalf of the city. Or feel free to just bump over there next to.
This is my first time presenting, so I've only been here a couple of months, so if I don't do it correctly, feel free to. Yeah, yeah, throw it at me. So this um, this recommendation, a little background came from Council Chair McConaughey. Um, one we fully supported. Um, got a little background in it. There's, as you know, there can be. Uh lapses in crosswalks and lighting, uh according to our current standards, we space where we can, but. Um, we, we were proposing to, to amend the current code as it is to um, do you need me to read all this? I was gonna say, yeah, so to add a street light onto each section, each side of a crosswalk. Um, it would be for new development only. Um, after that, the lights would be dedicated to the city and our city staff would maintain those lights. Um, but it would be for new development. Developers would be required to put them at all marked crosswalks. Um, but they would also, we, we put code in, or wording in here that would allow our current city engineer to also um. Make sure that it follows the UDOT standards and guidelines. That's really about it. It's pretty, pretty cut and dry. Any questions on it that I could answer?
Yes, um, it's not un, not uncommon on the news to hear of citizens complain uh. Quite vocally when there's been a, an accident or several accidents in the same spot. Those things often make the news. I assume that this is kind of headed in that direction to prevent.
Yeah, yeah, they're, from, from my knowledge, there's been a, a couple of incidences in the past and, and. And um our streetlight crew, for one, you know, we don't, we, we do all we can to maintain the lights that are out. But we're, we're fully supportive of this and recommend because it is doing s- steps to prevent something from happening rather than reactionary. At the time.
Are there any, are, are there any hotspots that you've identified already?
Yeah, we have quite a few. Our engineering team, um, I wish I had a visual of it. They, they. Uh, with their, I don't know how they do it really with GPS GIS. They were able to create a heat sensitive map showing. Um, where all of our streetlights are in the dark spots in the city. And so we're, we're doing what we can as our street lighting crew to, to maintain those. But like I say, as of right now, this would just be for new development only, so we wouldn't go back to those areas. I mean, the goal would be one day to then, once development's going, to do what we can, but that would be a huge financial cost to go back throughout the city. But, yeah.
Right, Commissioner Quinney has rejoined us at what, six oh five? Um, I'm gonna make this really, really. Professional, right? This is, this is pizzazz. Um, any other questions for staff?
I have one.
Go ahead.
I was just curious, uh, do you know, uh, if this is gonna increase the number of lights in the city by a certain percentage or?
It will increase some, um, I don't know a percentage, but it would increase, I would think quite a bit. Um, like I say, you're thinking of any marked crosswalk, but then have a light on each end of that crosswalk. Um, we're a little. Tight on staff, but like I say, our, our streetlight crew, this is one we fully support. We're, we're willing to, to do the extra work if that makes sense. But yeah, it will. I don't have a percentage. Um, like I said, we'll know as more as the development, I think, is proposed.
It's exciting. Thank you.
Commissioner Hutch?
So help me understand when you say this is for new development only.
Yes.
Are you saying if I live on a street that was developed fifty years ago and it has poor lighting, I just need to move? Or, I mean, I, if I lived on that street right now, I'd be going, well, wait a second. Identified there's poor lighting, but you're not gonna do anything about it.
Yep, that's a great question. So on, under um, section, I believe it's, I'm looking at my notes here. D, the citizen option to install street lighting, says that residents of areas which do not have adequate street lighting systems. May install at their expense and dedicate to the city, street lighting systems acceptable to Rocky Mountain Power Company. So there, we do have wording in there where it is, it is possible. That's that.
Uh, that still doesn't help me. If I'm the little lady that's lived there for seventy-five years, I can't afford to put in a street light yet. I know that their children near me are suffering because of it. I mean, that just, it just feels inadequate to me.
Yeah, I, I could probably chime in there too and then maybe somebody else, but there's a, an additional option. Obviously, the council can fund, right? Like, there's, there's programs right now for sidewalks replacement where they. Determine which ones are the most needed repair and they, there's a certain amount of money that the council appropriates each year. And the sidewalk crews go and repair as many as they can. And, and I'm sure there's probably something like that that's gonna happen for. Uh, streetlights at crosswalks. This, that wasn't the goal of this text amendment, though. This text amendment was at least for new construction. Here's what we want developers to do. And the commitment the city has with this text amendment is that we'll maintain the ones that the. Developers put in, right? So if they paint that or put up signs to mark them and they put up the lights at each end. The city is committing to replace the paint, replace the sign, replace the light bulbs, whatever. So it's kind of limited scope of this text amendment, but nothing prohibits the council from appropriating money to. To uh upgrade what's already there. It's just not within the, the uh context of this text amendment.
Thank you.
Chair, Chair Allen, if I may, already in place on your utility bill, you have a line item for streetlights. Part of that is for putting in lighting in areas that don't have it in existing parts of the city. So we're already doing that. Then when we get complaints about, concerns about those, then we go and put them in and we do that as well. So when we have those dark spots that he mentioned, there's a lot of them. They look through theirs and they go through and do that. But when we get complaints because people going through, and there's actually been two crosswalks that we did this, this past, this year. This year's not over yet, that we added those lights there from input we got from them. So we do have a budget set aside for that. And this past budget season, we increased that by one dollar per resident, which will, is the whole purpose of that. Is to get the dark areas in the city that got missed.
In fact, that's the very next code section. If we had, this is eight dash six dash two. If we were to show up on the screen, which we don't have ready, but eight dash six dash three, that's the fund the mayor was just talking about that. It's like a utility fund, like a water or sewer or garbage or any other kind of utility fund, but it's just for these types of things. For streetlights, so.
Yeah, we currently follow UDOT guidelines, National Highway Guidelines regarding lighting, and those are the, what we maintain. If it's not adequate, we will come in and do that. Crosswalks are what's considered an enhancement. There are certain requirements and that's what our engineering team works out. So we're just looking to enhance it even, even further instead of, instead of waiting for something to happen, just add it beforehand.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Further questions after public hearing? Which uh brings us to the next segment. So this is uh identified as a public hearing. So if you are here to speak and would like to about our street lighting text amendment, uh or if anyone's online would like to do so. You will have three minutes to make your thoughts known. No takers, huh? All right, fair enough. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring this back to the planning commission for further discussion or a motion. Commissioner Winn?
Based on the information and findings of the required criteria set forth in this staff report upon the evidence and explanations received today. I move that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the, this application. Finding that an affirmative determination has been made for the criteria found in thirteen dash seven D dash six B one through four.
All right, Commissioner Quinney?
Second.
Motion for Commissioner Winn, a second from Commissioner Quinney. Further discussion on the motion? All in favor? Hi, any? All right, motion carries unanimously. I'm gonna get this word at some point. I know, so amazing. Agenda item number three, we are here to turn some time over to the mayor. Who has now disappeared, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. You already embarrassed me once today. We don't need to do this again.
Thank you, Mayor. I should have handed this to you. You need to talk? Oh, there we go. That was the final agenda item. I'll turn the time over to Commissioner Quinney.
I move to adjourn.
We are adjourned.